So we'll call this meeting for the Grand County Board of Commissioners meeting on February the 18th, 2025. Order members of the county board of commissioners are advised hereby to do duty under the state government ethics act to avoid conflicts of interest in the appearance of such conflict and further are instructed to refrain from participating in any matter coming before this board of county commissioners with respect to which there is a conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict.
Let's pray. Good day, Heavenly Father, and just thank you for this glorious day that you've given us. Father, we just ask that you just continue just to bless us and Father and just protect us. And Father, we ask that you just give us the knowledge and understanding that we need. And Father, we just thank you for everything that you do for us. And Father, most of all, everything that you do for this county. And we just ask for your support and your understanding. Father, just guide us and just continue just to be with us. And Father, we just lift up our loved ones and our families throughout the county, especially those who are seeking aid. And Father, thank you again for everything that you do. And Father, all these things we ask of you in precious and holy name. In Jesus Christ's name, prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as reading?
All right.
All in favor? Can I have a motion for approval of the minutes for the regular meeting January 21st, special meeting January 9th, and emergency meeting January 9th? All in favor? Uh, the senior center, Ms. Wanda Hill?
Good afternoon, everybody. I just want to ask permission to apply for a block grant, community here block grant, which provides mills on wheels for elderly citizens. Um, every year we start out with previous year's allocations. We don't have our true allocations probably in June or July. So this year it's going to be $126,336. There will be a 25% county match, $14,037.
I can do it.
Second? All in favor?
Thank you all so very much.
Can you add E M S Director Brian Stevens?
Good afternoon. Actually, I have a couple of things. One of them came up this, this afternoon, right in the last minute. I don't need anything. So with that being said, that being said, uh, last year, uh, we received a domestic proprietor's grant, uh, in some of about $78,000. And we're able to purchase an underwater, uh, ROB with sonar, uh, for specifically for service and recovery. It is self-contained. Uh, unfortunately, it can't do everybody. So, uh, we, we have been able to use that several times already, uh, assisted several other counties. Uh, was on standby for several weeks through hurricane delay response. Uh, it came to my attention during that that we were getting a platform to operate off of, uh, such as a boat. Uh, explored several different grant opportunities, uh, and have received, uh, through a community foundation grant, uh, in the amount of $37,500, uh, in addition to some unrestricted E M P G funds, which is emergency management performance grant. Um, and have been able to secure all the funds and some quotes for all the, the rest to close out that project. Um, so I, I have a, uh, spec sheet and a quote from Madisonville for a, uh, a boat, uh, the motor trailer and a sonar device, um, in the amount of 40,000, 45,426, with the unrestricted E M P G funds and this new grant funding. Um, I'm sitting with a fund balance of around $49,000 somewhere within the budget of, uh, you know, the funds that we have to expand. So once, uh, we get the, uh, I have the verbal approval and the verbal checks in the mail. But once I get the, uh, the actual funds and the, uh, award letter, I'd like to, to ask if it would be okay to go ahead and pursue this and go and get this boat ordered before the summer. Uh, and it will become a, a valuable resource, not just in Grand County, but, uh, throughout Western Kentucky, Carolina. So it'll be something that we can reach out and help our neighbors with to.
So I'll make a, I'll make a motion to, um, approve to purchase the boat and necessary equipment using your grant funds. All in favor?
The, the second thing that, that came up like aside from, I'm sure you're aware of our budget season already. Uh, we were reviewing some of my, uh, line items, particularly my capital outlay, and discovered that we are into positive, believe it or not, uh, around $180,000. With that being said, did a little bit of digging, uh, found a state contract that's already been awarded for ambulance remounts, uh, through the, uh, we'll be able to piggyback off of the sheriff association, uh, bid and contract, and have a proposal for, uh, emergency transport associates, which we have purchased ambulances through them before, to remount one of our used ambulances, uh, and providing the, the bottom line comes in under the amount of capital outlay that we have left, I'd like to go ahead and do that now because we're still looking 180 days, uh, from the time we initiate the contract until we receive the, the trust. And then looking ahead to the next budget year, we would still be have money in reserve to, to budget for a, a second remount and get us caught up from the COVID years because for three years that we didn't, weren't able to purchase ambulances. And, uh, we're trying to have some reliable transportation. And I will come back to the board, I guess, through the, the clerk and the manager, uh, with that file of total to make sure it's under what we have in the capital outline before we proceed. If that's acceptable with everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I need Jason Barrino for project manager update.
Good evening, Chair, evening, Board of Lords. You should have the project manager, um, update report on your, as you provide you. Several updates, mostly good news. Uh, I'll skim through these relatively quickly. Um, obviously, number one, the Justice Center Commissioners are still working on the site for that one. And the next two, item two and three, probably going to be coming off of the report. Reason why I didn't take number two off the senior center expansion is we're still closing out documentation with the commerce. It's, uh, it's one of those situations where you send an email on, you might get a response relatively quickly, and then you might have to send another one to find out where that last email went. So we're still working with USDA, they've taken that off of the list. Of course, the next one, number three, is Big Oaks. With them looking into their, I'd say this, until they figure out what they're going to do with the grant for their elementary school, will probably take that off the list as well too, if needed. Works out, we can always put it back on, so I'll remove that one. Uh, the jail, number four, Grand County Jail, I met with, the biggest thing is we've got some numbers for this and it's around, we budgeted. But I sat down with, uh, county manager Chris and, uh, finance officer, Ms. Stacy, and asked about the money, where can we get the money? And their feeling was, of course, this is up to the commissioners as well too, that maybe we need to budget for facilities for the next budget year. Right now, during the budget constraints, we don't have the, the, the numbers that we budgeted. If that's okay, we'll look at trying to put that in the budget for one July next year.
You need another?
I just, I don't think so, just as long as the commissioners know we're, we're trying to get the project. Commissioner Nellum, you and I have talked about it, it needs to be done unless we want to look at it somewhere else in the budget. We need to try to look at facilities and budget it for the next budget year. When we look at it, it's really up to the commissioners, not even want to proceed. But that's really where we're at with the, with the, just the ads and hat of eight men. Move on item five, that is the assault payment. Again, that was the one where we need some more money to be to do E M S. I'd like to meet with Ryan, if you mind, with the manager, Chris, at some point, maybe this week, if not next week, and kind of look and see what we can do to, to work that out. Since you, you should have a scope of work and the estimates and all that. And so I did talk to the tribe, but I haven't heard back yet. So we'll, we'll, we'll meet and try to look for additional money because I really like to see this project be done at some point. So I'll work with the internal agency, we can find out. Item six, um, great news, obviously, we worked the money out for both of those homes, the one on 243, uh, Or Branch and 66, 80 Road. We got the money down within our grant funding. We even got a little bit working with the mistakes. She's been great with, uh, helping us with the money, the plans and all that, PhD account. And we got a little bit of money and work to help us with, uh, storage for each facility, like we did the other ones. Both projects have been awarded to W N C Contracting. We'll start them, um, we won't do them, we did a lot of simultaneous with the last two. I see us doing that later with the project. I want to get one started a little bit, get one started going and get a foundation in a little bit more than we did the last one, just so we could see what the expense is going to be. Because usually that's where you don't know what your final line is going to look like until you get your foundation in. So we'll start with 243 and then work with, uh, 68. Both homeowners are aware, we'll let them know what we'll do from here is I'm just currently waiting on the bonds. Those are, that's the big thing statutorily, need to wait for performance and payment of bonds before we can give them notice to proceed. And I called yesterday, had to hear from the bonding company, but they expect some any time. So that's all we're waiting for, to give them notice to proceed. I foresee us starting some stuff, obviously, in March and then we'll roll from there. There's also obviously grant reporting that I do for that grant as well with the Dogwood Health Trust. I'm responsible for that as well as our skip grant recordings, I do those as well too. So I'll keep up to date with that and then obviously, what I'd like to do, if the commercial, if commissioners felt like it was, and of course, the public too, and I see you're here as well. I'll, I'll, once we start getting the project, if you would like, I can do the same presentation up on the screen to show you status. If you guys like that from the previous, I think it worked well for the public to see. You'll have an opportunity, obviously, if you go over there. Then we'll work with the family, once we start, we started up on Sweetwater, I'll continue to contact. What I'd like to do is what we did before, kickoff meeting, come down, do all the paper signing, and then make sure they understand what the process is for bringing storage containers, moving in those storage containers, and then demolition of the facility. So we'll work closely with all the homeowners, make sure we're doing that. But good news on that front for sure. And then the last item I'll go over is item seven. Again, a great, um, great news on this, we completed the memorandum of agreement with, uh, from R D A, or to the school board, got signed, the deed that lot seven, which is the first one, if you enter the upper road going around this southern side, it's the first lot on the left when you go in. Um, we did it into the school and now need to work with the school on starting construction for the home. So that is ready to start. It's basically the school's property and they can start with their curriculum. I'm hoping they'll be, I think they will. I'll, I'll follow up and have a better update at commissioner meeting. But the intent would be, this gives them an opportunity to start doing foundation work early in the year. They can do it, obviously, through the spring and into the summer, if it's within their curriculum. Either way, they can have the summer to do it. Excited about getting that done. And that, that's intended to sell at a lower rate, obviously, when you sell a home. When, as a contractor, me being one, we've got our profit on top of that, right? And this one will be, will be, there will only be any profit included, other than what we have to sell and be able to get money back from what we spent on whatever the property cost. And, and then property, it's basically the property, if they have a property, and then we can do, love to be able to build another home. But what that means is probably a three-bedroom home and it's kind of very low cost. And that's the intent, is to help low moderate income, um, people in this county to afford it. Usually younger couples, it's a good option for that as well too. So looking forward, that's an exciting achievement for that property and losing rent. So excited to get that one done, get going. Uh, I, I will, I said it was the last one, I'll, I'll touch a little on the rate is sanitation. Um, I did include that as the commissioners know in our request for granted money to several of our legislators, state legislature as well as federal legislature, so. And usually when you're talking about sanitation and recyclables, especially on the big side, they like to see, uh, progress with that. And so I'm hoping that's going to help us get some stuff done out of sanitation. And what's great is we sort of have a good asset plan, I shared with you the last time, for us to work, to work towards, to make that more efficient and to also be able to offer better facilities for recyclables long-term. So unless there's any questions, that is all I have.
Thank you very much. And Tracy Carter, with finance reporting.
All right, I will turn my, I don't have this on, uh, this gets an item, but I did want to, since he just touched on the projects, I did put together a project ordinance and for Grand County, um, Dogwood Health Trust, that will be on home demolition and reconstruction project. So, um, this project ordinance, what it shows is, um, I'm sorry, we're basically appropriating the amount. So this money has been sitting here at dedicated funds, waiting for this project. So now at this point, we will appropriate those funds into the reconstruction activities that he just referenced. And then we built a little, we had due to some interest in, in, uh, the sale of a prior C D V G home, we do have a little bit of, um, contingency funds that we'll most likely use for the storage facilities. So, um, we will be appropriating, um, $506,800 for the reconstruction activities. And then the remaining $29,864.32 will go into our contingency for those unexpected costs. And, and we do have that fund balance, so we are appropriating that fund balance out of that account in the amount of $536,664.32. So I will need, um, a motion to accept the project ordinance and the budget, um, as detailed in here. And I, I can make copies for this after my presentation, I apologize, I got kind of something else to grab, make you a call.
I'll make a motion to accept, um, as detailed in report.
Thank you.
All in favor?
So moving into, you do have a copy of the amendment in your packet. And so this will be amendment number six. And this amendment makes appropriation changes. And we did receive the, um, insurance proceeds for the sole and water roof replacement that we have to do in the amount of $11,275.86. So we're adding that to the appropriation side, but then also to the revenue side to offset that cost. And we had under budgeted for higher A M S auto insurance. Unfortunately, there was some increases and due to some of the new vehicles that came onto the fleet. So we do need to use some contingency funds, you will approve that in the amount of $31,832. Just so that you know, I brought the information for us. Um, we do have $42,000 left over in our contingency funds for the moment. So that would bring us down to about $10,000 balance if we were to use that for this purpose. But we have to have it, so, and it, and it is due to the new vehicles that ride into the fleet. And this covers all of our, um, fire and all of our A M S.
I'll make a motion to use the contingency funds to, um, pay for the auto insurance in the amount of $31,832.
And then the, I'm sorry to do it, so, all in favor? And then the senior center, uh, their general purpose grant, which just now finally got, finally executed, fully executed, um, for this fiscal year, and it came in at $852 less than what we had budgeted. So I'm just adjusting that on the expenditures and the revenue side. And then item number four was, um, D S S needed to move the amount of $20,000 from their enhanced Medicaid claiming to foster care. And this is for the purpose of women's ward. And they requested that, so that was the other change there. So those are all included in amendment six, and that springs, um, so the appropriations, um, decreased by $32,684 on the one side, and then they increased by $63,107.86 on the other side. And then the revenues, um, are decreasing by $852 on the one side, and then increasing by $11,275.86 on the other side. There is a balance she brought behind that, so you can see how it is mapped.
I'm saying that motion. All in favor?
And then as far as our financial institution updates, I've just, all of the accounts have been updated with the new board, um, with each exception of the three accounts that I'm still pending the sheriff's signature of, I'm sure they might need to come by and sign the signature forms. And just to give you a brief update, um, with our L G C, um, we are continuing to have those check-ins with Tim Green monthly. He's our coach. Um, and then just a reminder, if you have not completed it yet, that your board training must be completed by April 15th. And we'll have to submit proof to the L G C that that's been done, proof to the board members. Um, we have turned in our budget to actual reports that was due in January, and we'll have another one of those due in April. Um, and then our review of the draft budget ordinance is also due, um, April 15th. And so we have begun, we sent out requests to all of the departments, they're turning in their budget requests, we're working on consolidating that, and as you know, we have leads next week when the department heads to go ahead and start analyzing that. So we're, we're crunching numbers and, and getting it all in there, so lots of fun. And then the next thing to have in your packet is a copy of the income statement. The income for January was $4,645,425.39. And that brings our year today total to $14,950,699.8. There's also expenditures by department included in your packet. Our expenditures for December, what I think I should not have did that, I should have said January, I apologize. On your thing, it says December, it should have said January. Uh, that's on 5A. And our expenditures for $2,595,883.66. And that brings our year today expenditures to $13,118,350.32. As far as our property tax collections, you have a copy of the January report attached. Our collections for January were $1,691,224.32. For prior years, we collected $29,115.92. So our total collections from the tax year 2024 was $8,382,576.32, which leaves a balance to be collected at $887,642.12. And our collection per cent as of January was 94.1%. And as far as sales tax collections, um, you have a copy of that attached. Um, December collections that were paid in February, they always pay two months later, was $293,573.98, which brings our year today collections to $1,866,664.24. Our sales tax set aside for the schools, this is the portion that is set aside out of our sales tax collections. So in December, there's, you know, it's $57,183, that's the portion set aside for them. And that brings their year's total to $391,710.41. They have asked for several, um, appropriations out of those funds, and so their available balance sits at 167,373.14. And as far as the quarter cent set aside, you also have a copy of that report in your packet. And for December, the quarter amount set aside was $25,067.37. And that puts our total today at $1,581,575.96. Money is in addition to our skip funds that we have been awarded for the warehouse. And then, um, the vehicle tax collections, you've got a copy of that report attached as well. Our January collection will pay in February in the amount of $56,665.50, which brings our year today collections up to $394,478.8. And that is all I have, and I think I will cut them.
Good evening to you all. And then again, I'll say, as I said many times before, thank you all for what you do. I would like to have you consider creating a resolution and setting it up to political food chain. Uh, I'm strongly worded against decreasing any vendors, benefits, or services when it comes to what's going on. If it can be done, the voice starts here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other public comment? So we'll move on to the discussion items. Uh, item A, can I have a motion for releases in the amount of $1,017.77? All in favor? Sorry, Ms. May. And so, uh, item B, the reunited home, Jackson has stepped out, but, um, I believe Kim has some information and it's, um, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, but it's the, the facility that Ms. Tracy Jones has been able to acquire. She's attempting to turn it into, um, a shelter for people that doesn't have homes. Um, you know, they're, they're getting in out of the cold weather, and of course, you know, the summer come, they'll get in out of the summer weather with that. But it's, uh, basically an old house and she was needing, um, siding, which has been, um, donated. She was needing roofing, um, and so I actually gave Kim the directive at our last special meeting to look into, uh, seeing if we could get a discounted price for some roofing materials for this, um, home. And she was able to get, um, a quote for around $1100 to $1200, and that includes all materials that would be needed. So I was hoping to get a motion to approve, um, a special appropriation to this reunited home to purchase these materials for the roof. How much did you say? Um, $1100 to $1200.
And I would say custom mode and force after help and allow them to have us.
That was very great for them to help us with that. And I know Tracy, uh, I spoke with her yesterday and she said she was in tears, she was so thankful. So I think this is going to help a lot of people. So, uh, all in favor? Okay, and then we have some, uh, polls to approve. So, um, C subsection I, property offer on 26. The vote was unanimous, we just need to approve that poll. And that was for the Stanley, uh, property initial offer, which was on February the 6th.
I think you do it all at one time.
Um, and then, uh, subsection, I, I purchased kennel for dangerous dogs on two six. This was, um, to help the, uh, Grand County Animal Research startup. They bought a kennel that was, um, for the dangerous dog only. So it was like a kennel that held two dogs and had a fence and everything attached. And that even included like the delivery and setup fee and everything. So the next thing would be I, I, my property offer two eleven. Um, and this was the second offer for the Stanley property, only the fifteen acre acres in the front. Um, and then unfortunately, um, due to unforeseen circumstances, we did have to withdraw the property offer on two, um, twelve. So if I can have a motion to approve those polls. Second, all in favor? Uh, section D, approve leave without pay for a carer injured for the amount of twenty-seven point seven zero hours.
Uh, yeah, that one got mommy, he was sick and I did not know, but I think it was at the same time I was out with the flu. So it actually took the hours prior in the past paper. We have to, um, add it to his total of the five days. So you're discounted back, um, approving, but it has to go forward to his five days.
Motion.
Make a motion with we approve the rest of that bit, Lee?
Yes.
Twenty-seven, seven.
Second, all in favor? Section E, accept the possibly show renewal with six percent increase.
Okay, so our increase is, uh, our renewal did increase by six percent, which is still good. We've been upside down, um, and, and that's okay, we're going to get, we're going to get on the other side. But, um, this is the best price that I feel that we can get at this time. We have to sign the paperwork, uh, February twenty-eighth, or I would not bring this to you until that time. And so if it's okay for you to approve, um, the renewal, we had, um, gathered blue possibly shield with the increase of six percent. I would most appreciate it.
Sir.
All in favor? So item F, um, sponsored for the senior senior games. I had saw this flyer come across the email and I was speaking to Kim about it. And so, uh, basically they're holding the senior senior games in Jackson County. And they're asking for sponsors, um, and the prices are relatively cheap. So, um, I would like to make a motion to sponsor, uh, on behalf of the Grand County Water Commissioners in the senior senior games. And we can choose from several packages. I believe there's a gold, silver, bronze package. I would like to make a motion. And so with the gold, it includes, um, several things as far as advertising.
It will ensure your business organization logo enlarged print at the top of the official Smoky Mountain Senior Games T-shirt. A yard sign at all events with our logo and an invitation to both our kickoff breakfast on March third first and our closing ceremony. If you have never attended and you're senior, please go enjoy the day and go to the senior games. It is, it is very rewarding. Um, Commissioner Comey and I got to go to an event this past year and I was blessed that seniors had a great time. Uh, just good fellowship, good food and good free gifts. So if you get a chance to go, I would encourage that.
So I would like to make a motion to sponsor in the form of the gold package.
Second.
All in favor? Item G, uh, they're under a budget schedule, so I believe, um, next week, February the twenty-fourth, we have a meeting at five P M. The following day, the twenty-fifth, also the five P M, the twenty-sixth, at nine A M, the twenty-seventh, at nine A M, and that's next, next week.
That is correct. The two, the two are at five, and the two, and the two at the bottom are nines. So it's either back at two. And it tells the, um, departments that we will be seeing on those days. Trying to get the easiest one done as far as.
So for, um, item H, we would need a motion to accept the Smoky Mountain land proposal for construction site plan for a amount of five thousand dollars, and that would be from the recreation budget. Kim can act, will may have more to add, but it sounds like, um, this is for the act center to include various site plans, like erosion control, the grading plan, um, and then the plan for where the arena would sit. And you may have more information.
And I think I'm sure now it's going to come in and explain.
That's correct, that's totally accurate, yeah.
And from what I, what I understand, that's a pretty good deal.
I've been told by anybody in the business, it's good deal.
And this is Alan DeHart, who has spent a career in sold and water conservation, has a board view for the grade accounts.
I'll take it. All in favor? Item I, I'm a senior senior advisory board, um, passing this agreement, unfortunately. Um, we would need to replace that position. And I, I actually spoke with Ms. Hill before the meeting. And she had suggested that we, uh, make a motion to replace, um, Ms. Griffin with Mr. Harold Phillips. If he is in agreement, if I can have a motion.
Sir.
All in favor? And I'd also like a motion to, uh, reappoint Harold Phillips to the transportation advisory board. All in favor? And also a motion to reappoint Debbie Beasley to travel to areas in effective one seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five for two years. Can I have a motion for that? All in favor? And then, um, section L, a dog preservation for the America's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary to Grand County. And I believe that would have the resolution. Should I read it? The resolution of Grand County recognizing and approving of the Grand County official America two hundred and fifty, uh, North Carolina committee. A resolution of Grand County, North Carolina, supporting the America two hundred and fiftyth North Carolina committee for the United States Simuliquits Continental America two hundred and fiftieth North Carolina. Whereas Roy Cooper, governor of North Carolina, created America two hundred and fifty North Carolina to plan, encourage, develop and coordinate the commemoration of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the United States and North Carolina's integral role in that event and the role of its people on the nation's past, present, and future. And whereas America two hundred and fiftieth N C has a mission to engage all North Carolina, uh, or all North Carolinians at all one hundred counties through their many signatures and officially recognized programs, projects, and events over the commemoration by inspiring future leaders and celebrating North Carolina's contributions to the nation over the last two hundred and fifty years. And whereas by adoption of America's two hundred and fifty N C's mission, uh, Grand County Committee is officially formed to achieve the goals of America two hundred and fifty of N C. Now therefore be it resolved that the Grand County, um, hereby endorses America two fifty N C. And its mission, it resolve the county of Grand, uh, Grand officially establishes an America two fifty N C committee made up of diverse group of citizens to work with America two fifty N C on any and all activities. The participants of Grand County Committee will strictly voluntarily rules and there will be no compensation for participation. It is further resolved that a call of this resolution be sent to the North Carolina Legislative, uh, delegation and the America two fifty N C committee adopted this eighteenth day of February, two thousand and five. I'll take a motion to accept the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
I would say that the chair just will allow us to pass the money given to the county by, by the passing of the resolution.
Uh, and there's a ten thousand dollar grant that will allow us to be able to, uh, set this up. And, uh, we have been doing email change with, I can't remember what the fellow's last name is, but it's, it's weird last name. But, uh, he's been very supportive and so this resolution helps us move forward with, uh, getting our committee started.
Good, thank you. And, um, item E, permission to apply for amateur sports grant, uh, application. I'll leave this, Kim has some information about that.
Yes, um, Friday, Janelle Rapper called me and she said that they had some, uh, associates in Raleigh and they just earned of this sports betting money that was going to come to all one hundred counties. And Grand County was named and we, uh, could get up to twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the grant requires seven questions, very reasonable questions, I thought those. And we'll get, we will get twenty thousand dollars. I went in and applied the first part to see. And then once y'all pass to give us permission to actually apply, then, um, they don't turn this one down. So we are set for twenty thousand dollars to buy helmets, to buy shoulder pads. It's for our sports, our kids. So new, new, uh, equipment for every sport, you know? So it's wonderful, wonderful news.
I'll second, can you just also make the motion and all in favor? Twelve, close session, G dot S, one board three, dash, three eighteen, one, one, eight, one, three, five, six. Privilege or confidential information, attorney, client, privilege, personnel, and contracts. Kim Crisp and Attorney Kapp. Thank you. All in favor?